Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is August 24th, 2016. We are holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I'm Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to welcome everyone today. The purpose of today's Finance and Audit Committee is to ensure that a strong internal audit and compliance function is in place to monitor the effectiveness of internal controls and promote an enterprise risk management program. This is necessary for a $6 billion entity such as CPS. Board oversight and increased transparency related to financial/ budget status and audit effective activities are also a key. It is critically important for the board to have meaningful and transparent conversations on financial status of the organization, of which there will be dialogue today during a series of board discussions. The order of today's meeting will include an audit update, a financial update, public participation. As always, I ask for courteous behavior from the audience and, of course, from our presenters. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of the meeting was posted on Monday, August 22nd, 2016, at least 48 hours before this meeting at boardroom, principal office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on cpsboe.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Finance and Audit Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 24th, 2016, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong.
Present.
Vice President Guzman.
Present.
Member Dr. Hines.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Father Guiranzini.
Present.
President Clark.
Present.
Six members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our CEO, and Ronald Marmar, our general counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's begin with the audit and finance presentations. I believe that Andrel Holloway will go first.
As Andrel approaches the mic, I would also like to acknowledge our chief education officer, Dr. Janice Jackson. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Andrel Holloway. I'm the chief internal auditor here at CPS, and today I will provide the board with an update on internal audit activities. However, before we get into the update, I would like to level set on the mission of internal audit, just to make sure that everyone is clear. While the presentation comes up, I'll just continue. Internal audit is an independent, objective assurance function designed to perform three primary tasks: assess and measure period risk; assess and measure risk through period risk assessments; evaluate the effectiveness of internal controls and processes; and test for compliance with various requirements, including board rules, policies, and procedures. I think it's also important to note that internal audit is highly focused on working with management to identify efficiencies to improve organizational processes and reduce costs while also maintaining its objectivity and independence during that process. I'll continue to talk about the accomplishments that internal audit had for 2016.
You know, when I ran comm ed, Andrel, one thing I've always noted: things work better when they're plugged in.
Most certainly. I love technology. So there are several accomplishments that internal audit had for last year. I'd like to highlight a couple. One of the primary highlights or accomplishments is the changing of approach to school audits. We changed the approach to our school audit program primarily to increase the effectiveness of the program for CPS. This included increasing in-scope processes, increasing the test sample sizes, expanding the scope of time, expanded in-scope time periods, and we also added more audit field work time. Specifically, we increased the actual timeframe that we are out at the schools performing audits from one day to two days to allow us to cover much more and have a more impactful audit, again, all with the objective to more effectively evaluate internal controls and recommend additional controls as needed. We'll talk more about internal audits a little bit later in this presentation. Another highlight that I wanted to, I'd like to point out is the expansion of School Support Center, or SSC, that internal audit worked very closely with management to help define that expansion. The expansion will centralize financial and accounting functions performed at schools with the goal of removing financial and accounting burdens from school staff to allow more time to focus on administrative activities in education. And to give you a sense of the complexity and volume of financial activities happening at our 600-plus schools, on an annual basis, the school staff process 6,000 bank account reconciliations, 70,000 budget transfers, and process hundreds of millions of dollars in purchasing transactions, all overseen by principals who are first and foremost educators. So leveraging the capabilities of SSC is intended to help drive process consistency, improve internal controls, and also provide and leverage that financial expertise offered by SSC to provide principals with more insightful and proactive financial, again, capability and expertise to help them better manage their schools financially. What I'd like to do very quickly here, this is a busy slide. I won't cover everything, but I want to highlight the overall themes that my office had for the last several months up to the last year. We focused primarily on three themes. The first one was immediate strengthening of internal controls and increasing accountability for process effectiveness and policy compliance across management. Driving internal controls is designed to increase the diligence and spending decisions and add more transactional transparency so that we can better understand organizational spend. Right now, we are also currently focused, and moving forward, to make sure we have a risk-based audit approach as we move forward with the FY17 internal audit plan. So as you look to the column to the left, again, to talk about strengthening of internal controls, over the last year, we've identified several internal control gaps related to a number of items such as individuals working less hours than reported, swiping in for other employees, or inappropriate use of sick days, and that has led to a number of process gap changes that we've recommended to management, and management has either implemented or is implementing so that we can make sure that these activities are diminished greatly, and if they do happen, that we can catch it as soon as possible. We have also had some of these activities lead to employee discipline, including termination at some times, in some cases. And I think one thing that's real important to say about the initial effort here is that I think we're starting to do a much better job of increasing audit awareness across the organization, which I think overall improves the governance of the organization. As you move to a column in the middle, and we talk about increasing controls designed to help us better manage spend, there are a number of things that we did last year. One of the first things that we implemented was reducing check approval limits or check amounts that could be written out at schools and adding additional approvals in the purchase requisition process. And the goal here was to increase transparency and increase the number of people looking at transactions before we actually executed those transactions to make sure, again, that we were diligent in our spend and that we managed our spend appropriately. And this effort, combined with a number of efforts, including things that happened at mid-year across the organization, I think, did successfully help us reduce some of our spending, which was necessary given our financial condition. To give a sense of how these controls, in my opinion, have been effective, we took a sample of 40 schools and looked at their spend year-over-year, 15 versus 16, from September of last year through January this year. These controls were put in place in February. For those 40 schools for that timeframe, year-over-year spend was trending at about $100,000 over '15 and '16. When we implemented the controls, after, in July, we basically went back and did another analysis and looked at the spend for those same set of 40 schools from February to June. Collectively, the spend year-over-year for those schools during that second timeframe decreased by about $1.1 million. And again, I think there are a number of things that led to that reduction, but I think the controls that were put in place to, again, add more diligence to the spend certainly helped. Moving over to the column on the right, one thing I want to highlight is something I talked about before, is that we are conducting a formal enterprise risk assessment. I think it's necessary, given the changes that have happened at CPS over the last year or so, and I think what it does is it helps the organization better understand its risk profile, better prioritize risk going forward, inform enterprise risk management programs and activities, and for me, and for my obligation as the internal auditor here, make sure that this organization has a risk-based internal audit plan for the upcoming year. The other thing I think is important to note about the risk assessment that's actually being performed here, I actually took and split it into two components. I have an organizational risk assessment, which is more of your traditional risk assessment, but I also have responsibility for compliance here, compliance monitoring at CPS, and I believe that the compliance monitoring responsibility is vast here. At CPS, there are a lot of requirements that we have, a lot of regulatory requirements, a lot of grant requirements, so we are actually performing a separate risk assessment specifically focused on compliance risk. And I intend to provide the board with an update on both of those activities very soon. As we move to highlights of the school audits, as I mentioned earlier today, we certainly increased the robustness of the school audit program. We doubled the amount of time that we spend out at the schools performing the audits. We worked very closely with the school staff as we were executing those audits, and, excuse me, at the end of the year, we had a 25, or 27% coverage of district-managed schools audited in 2016. The other thing I think that's interesting to notice, again, with the expansion of scope and activity, we still increased the number of schools audited by 20% to 170 schools this year versus 140 last year. What I'd like to do is take some time to highlight the most common audit findings that we observed across the school audits, and they're highlighted here on the screen. One is a lack of approval for purchases prior, lack of approval of goods and services prior to purchase, inadequate documentation for manual payroll edits, lack of supporting documentation for cash receipts, and some issues associated with fixed assets. And to give you some perspective of, well, actually, let's continue to the next slide before I go there. In terms of why these issues have happened, me and my team have done some analysis, and we've narrowed it down to, I think, three common root causes. One is infrequent training. There is training that is no longer offered to all clerks and business individuals out at the schools. There's some training that is there but not required, is not mandatory. I think that we need to increase the robustness of our training program. I also think that the mentioned expansion of SSC is going to help improve a lot of these issues that we're seeing at the school as well because we're consolidating some of those processes and having people that are probably more equipped to handle those transactions to do so. And again, I want to be clear that I'm not saying that the individuals out at the schools are not capable of doing that. The challenge is, we have 600-plus schools that are essentially 600-plus financial centers. It's hard for any organization to have that level of consistent financial expertise across that footprint. So leveraging SSC to help us address some of these findings is something I think is really going to be impactful for this organization. Another issue that we have seen, or another root cause, is outdated policies and procedures. One of the main manuals, our internal accounts manual, has been updated since 2008, is not reflective of current processes, and is, again, in dire need of update, and that update will happen over the following months. Some of that is already happening now. The other thing is, I think that we could have increased system-based controls to help enforce policies that aren't in place right now. For example, we have a vendor cap of $10,000 per year, $25,000 per year. We can automate that, and we have started the process to automate those vendor caps so that once it happens, we will be able to stop the cash or spend very quickly. One thing I want to highlight is this graph here. I want to give you a perspective of the high-risk findings by process area. And so as you can see here, monthly account reconciliations, again, I said there's 10,000 of them, or, excuse me, roughly 6,000 of them per year, items, purchases, or dispersments, payroll, fixed assets. I wanted to provide the board with something that gives you a perspective of when we do have high-risk rated findings, where do they typically occur? And to give you some perspective of the impact of these findings, when you look at payroll, for example, not saying these hours that were incurred weren't appropriate, but we did not see for 15,000 hours tested last year sufficient documentation for those manual payroll edits, or there's a deviation to your payroll for some reason, and it was not adequately supported. When you look at cash receipts, there is $1.2 million in cash receipts that there was not sufficient documentation around. We have the cash, in some cases, we don't exactly know where that cash.
You said 1.2 billion. It's not like you 1.2 million.
Sorry. Thank you for that.
Mark spoke because he thought you just saw a budget gap.
I'm trying. The last piece is fixed assets. There are a number of issues related to fixed assets. It's an organizational issue that we are very diligently attacking right now. I think a big part of that is improving our fixed asset system capabilities, and that's something that is ongoing right now. To try to close out very quickly here, I want to highlight a couple of school, district-wide audits that we performed in the last year. One of those is the internal accounts audit. The purpose of this audit was to obtain an understanding of internal account transactions, which averaged about $200 million annually, and test for compliance with policy and identify process improvements. In terms of the key recommendations that came out of this audit, one major recommendation is to replace an unnecessarily cumbersome and expansive chart of accounts with a universal chart of accounts that all schools can use. Again, going back to SSC is something that I think is really going to be impactful for this organization. We're going to use it as a leverage point to implement some of these controls that we're talking about for internal accounts. But also to provide some perspective on the expansive chart of accounts that exist right now, internal audit estimates that there are about 6,000 account variations across our 600 schools in terms of internal accounts. We did an analysis of those 6,000 account variations and realized that we can reduce it by 95% to just 300 account combinations, and that's significant because what it allows the schools to do and allows SSC to do going forward in helping the schools is have a much better and clearer understanding of where transactions should be posted, quite simply.
Can I stop you for a moment? I think what you're saying is something that's particularly significant, and I want to make sure that there's real clarity and an understanding. How many accounts did you say there are across the system?
So for internal accounts, across the 600 schools, there are 6,000 account combinations.
And you believe that we can officially drive that number down to?
300. And we've done that analysis, it's something that is underway right now. And I think a big part of that expansion, I think there are a number of reasons, but a big part of that expansion is, you know, our schools have a lot of diversity in terms of their financial needs and reasons that they collect money, reasons that they expend money, and one school may say that I want to have another account for this particular activity, it might only be for this year or even a few months. That causes another account. Then another school does something else, and they'll stay out there forever and ever, and so it just has grown. I think what we're also going to make sure it happens is that the finance team manages the growth of that going forward and works with the team at the schools to make sure that if they do need additional accounts, that they're appropriately set up and they benefit the system overall.
Thank you.
The other key point that I would like to make related to internal accounts is, I think it's important that we look at the creation of what I will refer to as a school operations manual that covers all the financial, operational, and administrative processes that occur at a school to provide a single point of reference for school-based management and staff. This includes things like not only internal accounts, but make sure that we have consolidated guidance on things like rental income, sponsorships, fundraising, even edits to grades, edits to attendance. We need a one-stop shop for school staff to administratively and financially go to for guidance and make sure that everyone has clear guidance. I think that will be significant in increasing the consistency of activities happening across the district. The last thing that I'd like to highlight is a audit of supplemental pay systems. Supplemental pay systems are buckets, as we typically call them here at CPS. In FY16, had $160 million in original appropriations. And what I mean by original appropriations is that when the '16 budget was set up, there were $160 million in budgets, in buckets that were established. Some of those buckets were removed, and those dollars were allocated elsewhere for various reasons. The goal of the audit was to determine if we had adequate controls over the use of those buckets and recommend changes going forward. And to give you some perspective of buckets, for the $160 million in original appropriations, there are roughly 9,000 buckets, and these buckets are for a number of things: after-school programming, Saturday-day programs, security personnel for different things that are needed at the school. It's quite large, but again, it's, at the end of the day, all related to personnel cost. One thing that we have recommended, and this is something that has actually happened, was the reduction in the number of programs under which buckets can be created, and to reestablish all buckets for FY17, so much akin to the discussion around the chart of accounts and the expansiveness of chart of accounts, a much smaller number. There were roughly 280 programs under which you can establish a bucket coming into 2016. We did an analysis, and we worked with budget to implement this as part of the budget process. We reduced the number of programs from 280 to 50, again, looking to provide more clarity and more consistency in how these buckets are used going forward. The other thing is that we wanted to make sure that as schools create a bucket going into FY17, that they looked at them very diligently, and they set them up for the exact and intended purpose going forward. What we did see is that the original appropriation, as a result of some of these changes, for FY17, instead of starting out at $160 million as it did in '16, it actually reduced by about 30% down to $110 million. We saw the 9,000 buckets in FY16, after we closed them all out and asked schools to reconsider and reopen them, they reduced to just under 4,000 buckets or cut them in half. So what that's telling us is there are a lot of buckets out there that were aged and that were probably no longer needed, and they have had dollars associated with them that are no longer in place. Finally, I want to say that while there has been a reduction in bucket appropriations for various reasons, this audit was really focused on making sure that those buckets were appropriately used, that they were substantiated in terms of who can participate in the bucket, what are the expected outcomes of the bucket, and also another issue that we saw were the rates of pay paid to employees within those buckets. We saw a lot of occurrences where there were errors, and we want to make sure that those errors are resolved going forward. So that highlights the SPS or bucket audit and really concludes my internal audit update.
May I ask a question? Could you make a statement, or have you noticed differences between internal accounts and et cetera, between high schools and elementary schools? Are the number of accounts different, or is it more complex?
I would, yes. I would say as a general statement, almost across the boards, our high schools are more complex, particularly financially, there is more dollars coming in, there are more activities, particularly when you look at things like sports, for example. So I would say that, yes, the complexity of high school internal accounts is certainly different than elementary, and I would like to say that we are focusing on internal accounts across the district. And when you go back to, for example, the SSC implementation, we are moving forward, the management is moving forward with a pilot group of 40 schools, and there are a lot of the larger high schools in there to make sure that we learn some lessons very quickly and upfront that we can apply going forward.
Father.
Thank you, Andrel. This is really helpful. On your slide on page six, you have the most common audit findings observed during the school audits, and you've got four there. And then you have two key recommendations. I'm trying to find out where number four of those, the ineffective fixed access tracking, where will that be? So my first question is, where will that be addressed in your two recommendations? And the second thing would be, do you have a timeline so we could, we can ask for progress on meeting these recommendations?
Yeah, they're related to fixed assets. I'm working closely, my team's working closely with Ron Denard and his team to implement changes to fixed assets. I know there's a big focus on that. We've always been focused on fixed assets. Fixed assets are inherently difficult to track. They come in and they leave rather quickly. Sometimes useful lives are very short. You may think an asset is missing, it's not missing, it's just that it was disposed of and we didn't have the accounting transaction appropriately documented. So that is something that is underway. In terms of a timeline for that, I'd like to come back to you and give you an exact timeline. I'm not sure when we will have all those changes implemented, but going back to school audits as a general statement, because what I wanted to do is provide a general perspective of school audit findings. Every school audit, at the conclusion of the audit, receives an audit report with a remediation plan, and that remediation plan provides actions that management should take, that the principal and his or her team should take to remediate those findings with a timeline, and we follow up on those issues within an appropriate timeframe, particularly the high-risk issues. So what we could do going forward is provide you with more of an itemization of the, or aging, if you will, of those findings and give you some sense and perspective. So that covers school audits. With regard to internal accounts, I think internal accounts will, we've done a lot of change already. I think that there's more change that needs to happen. The SSC is going to be a big leverage point for us to implement more of these changes going forward. I would say we probably need the balance of the school year to make sure that all of those changes are effective and they go in the way that we would like them to go in. We have IT challenges that we have to make sure that we overcome because of the interconnectedness of all these accounts. Related to buckets, I would say by and large, buckets is done. We accomplished that through the budget process. We set up the new list of 50 programs, provided that guidance to the schools. They use that guidance, and audit will continue working with, in the context of our school audit plan, and pulling random samples on a monthly basis. We will monitor the use of those buckets and make sure that they're appropriate.
Okay. So next year at this time, we get, we go back to the same four that you've outlined here and get an update on?
Yes. I would expect next year that these four will be gone, and we might have a different four, because we will change our audit approach as we start to identify. These have been focal areas because we've seen these as being issues year-over-year-over-year, and I wanted to make sure that we had a robust plan that finally addressed these, and let's move on, you know, let's take our lumps, let's address this, and we'll expand and we'll look at other things. I expect that this year's audit plan will increase and will include other areas such as grants and other things that are relevant to the.
Can I add something else onto that list of things that I think the board would like to see? I mean, I think for me, it would be helpful to see that, you know, a lot of the efforts around efficiencies, around internal controls, that are, they sound great. I think it's also helpful to sort of think about how to quantify those, and I know for some of those, those are easier than others, but I'd love to see sort of running count as you're doing various audits, like what is the exposure that we've reduced? What are the, you know, percentage of fixed assets that we've lost, you know, a decrease in that over time, dollars that we've saved, et cetera? I think that would be helpful for the board to see measurable, and also for the public to see as well, how we're sort of, you know, being more diligent in terms of making sure that we're protecting the public's assets.
Absolutely. We can do that. One thing that my team does, and I continue to challenge them to do, is to exactly what you said, every time we find an issue, to quantify the impact of that and have a running tally of, you know, I'm convinced that internal audit will more than triple pay for itself, and that's not a measure that I typically would use, but I think in this environment, we have to continue to be laser-focused on finding all the gaps and process to call CPS real money, and beyond that, looking at ways to do things differently to save money. So we will certainly continue to do that and provide the board with an update.
Dr. Hines, do you have a question?
First, I want to commend you on beginning to streamline a very
beginning to streamline a very complicated and cumbersome process for people who work in the schools. And definitely, you mentioned we, the manual being outdated since 2008. When will the schools get an updated manual?
So that will happen over the course of the year. The way that we are addressing that now is as we see need for incremental change, we are providing policies and guidelines right now. So it's a heavy lift really to accomplish what I would like to accomplish. And again, that's that comprehensive school operations manual where you go one place to get all your answers. Right now, you have the IMS manual, there's other guidance for, again, fundraising and, you know, a number of different things. Let's try to consolidate that and give everyone one place to go. I think it diminishes confusion significantly. But in the interim, as we see the need for change, we will address it, we'll provide guidance. For example, yesterday, we had a training for the 40 pilot schools on the SSC expansion and we went through changes that we're making already to payroll and to I expenses and different things like that. And we're providing them with that sort of desktop procedure, if you will, right now so that they know, but more detailed procedures will be coming out over the course of the year. So in short, it will, I think it will take six to eight months for this to ultimately be buttoned up and really tight and really clear, really formal, but there will be a lot of clarity along the way.
Okay, and the last thing is, you mentioned the training of those pilot schools. What about the training of the other staff? And you mentioned clerks, but in many cases, definitely clerks are the ones who do the work, but principals are the ones who are held accountable?
Absolutely.
If something goes wrong, so are you training the principals with the clerks?
So the training yesterday and the training that we will continue to have, we invite the network chiefs, we invite the principals, we invite the clerks. We want everyone to hear the same message at the same time so that there's consistency in that message and hopefully fidelity in how those processes are executed.
I think it should be mandatory, not just an invite?
I agree.
And have them sign off because many of the things that come before us sometimes are because people didn't know, didn't go. And, you know, it can cost them their jobs or cost them their reputation, whatever. So I think those trainings we used to get them back then, they were mandatory at the beginning of the year during the summer.
Dr. Jackson, do you care to comment on that?
Oh, I just, I agree, they were mandatory. We should probably go back to that.
And that was, again, going back to the common findings, what's on the screen is that they're not mandatory, they're suggested going forward and we will certainly.
The training that you just held, Andrel, what kind of participation did you get?
So across the 40 pilot schools, we had all but, I believe, five schools in attendance and we are working with those five schools to make sure that we provide them with the same content. But going forward, we expect to have, again, full participation across the future ways the schools to come in.
Yeah, my question was, I think, relative to what Dr. Heinz has brought up, how many of the principals were there?
How many of the principals were there? I don't have an exact count of principals. I know that several of them were there because I know a lot of them by name now and I saw, I wouldn't say that I saw 40 there yesterday, but I saw, you know, more than 10 or 15 there yesterday.
Dr. Jackson, this is something you're going to take a look at and.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions for Andrel? I have a few. First, I'm going to put you on the spot and answer as carefully as you can. What's the opportunity here? With your focus on internal controls, your focus on efficiencies, what's the financial opportunity here? Now, I know there's not a precise answer, but you've got, you've been here almost a year. That means you know everything. And you have extensive experience. What would you think our financial opportunity is?
Okay, so don't hold me to this number. Looking, going back and thinking about the things that my office has audited, things that we are currently reviewing, we work with a lot of departments. And then if you go back and you look at the impact of the food and travel spend that we put controls in and actually had oversight over, there was a million-dollar reduction there, the 1.1 million-dollar reduction that I talked about with regard to that set of 40 pilot schools and a number of other things that we're trying to implement through shared services, for example, or SSC expansion. I would estimate, estimate that things that my team can probably help identify or are working on right now or will identify through process gaps that cost us real money, such as, again, the things that we saw where, you know, employees are not working the hours that are reported and that costs us money. I would say that estimate is somewhere probably in the neighborhood of 10 to 12 million dollars over the next year that I think that we may be able to quantify in terms of real cost savings or opportunity to save if we take the appropriate action.
Thank you. You had a slide that showed a list of issues that you were looking at, some of which may imply fraudulent behavior. Besides the work of internal audit, we have the Office of the OIG. I assume there's a cooperation and where appropriate, that information is turned over for further investigation?
Yes, that's absolutely the case. Nick Schuler, the Inspector General, and I have a conversation, generally speaking, every two weeks and we talk about things that I'm working on. And I expect that we have referred things over to the IG. I expect that we will continue to refer things over to the IG. And I expect that there may be things that also come the opposite direction, but there certainly is the collaboration there and I think that is important because there are tools and there are things that the IG has at his disposal that I don't, that I think that can help us really get at employees that are, that have conduct that I think that deserve those types of actions.
And lastly, the mission of the Chicago Public Schools and the Board of Education, first and foremost, is in fact, education and providing a quality education for the nearly 400,000 young people that attend our schools. But because the reality of performing that task requires ample financial resources and certainly at present, our resource, our revenue opportunities don't quite match our operating needs, it's just a greater challenge and a higher bar to make sure that all of our leaders and, you know, I think the foundation of that leadership is with the principals. Not only are they required to be outstanding academic leaders, they have to be financially responsible. And we need to help them to do that as much as, as best we can. I think the function of internal audit, an area that has always been here, but perhaps not operating at the highest efficiency that it can, provides a real chance for us to be more efficient and reduce unnecessary expenditures. So I put a lot of faith in the function of your office and you'll find more than 12 million.
Okay, I appreciate the faith and we'll certainly deliver on it.
If there are no other questions?
No, I just want to make one comment. I know you said last, but the one thing, because you know, I'm always going to come on that side, I think it ought not, the training, as I remembered years ago, was not, I'm going to get you, I'm going to inform you. I'm going to teach you so that I don't have to get you and so that you could save money for your schools and do better by the children. And I'm not even implying that that's the way you go in, but I'm suggesting that when you do your training, is this is to help you because this is what we've seen come up. This is not to catch you.
Right.
I'm sorry.
No, I think, thank you, Dr. Heinz, that's the benefit of having principals sit on the board. You provide, I think, perspective that may otherwise be overlooked and not appropriately appreciated. The function of internal audit is not an enforcement function, we have an OIG for that. The function is to in fact, identify, work with the organization and drive efficiency through proper adherence to internal controls. And Dr. Jackson, I'm actually very encouraged that you see the need to make these training sessions mandatory at all the appropriate levels. I think that makes a great deal of sense. If there are no other questions?
Just a related statement, just curiously, you know, the independent schools that we have are healthy schools, is my understanding, and there are schools that are financially in good condition and good shape and can provide some example and some help in training. Is that accurate or is?
Yes, I absolutely agree. I think there are a number of principals, there are a number of clerks, there are a number of business operation managers out there that, you know, we know and we talk to a lot and we bounce things off of to make sure that, you know, we're taking the right approach and they'll do the same thing to us and particularly some people on my team. So I think that we'll continue to leverage that going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Frank, just one, just one question, just occurred to me. Who audits charters?
So we have just recently started adding charters to the audit program. It's a new territory, to be honest, it's a complicated territory. Even with the complexity, for example, of our internal accounts, it's still one set of internal accounts here at CPS, it's still oracle. Every charter school can have their own systems and do have their own systems and processes and ways of going about doing things. So as we tread into that area, we need to make sure that we figure out the best way to go out there and get the most impactful sort of result. But we are moving in that direction.
So you're just starting that?
We are just starting that, yes. One final comment going back that I wanted to make is that in terms of providing information to the schools to empower them to know exactly what the issues are, the same slides here where I talk about most common audit findings, root causes, et cetera, I have provided to principals and clerks at least twice in the last year, including yesterday's training. So it's my intent to not only have this information, but to make them aware of that so that they can understand, A, the impact of it and what we've identified, but also allow them to better understand why we're making some of these changes because I think if they understand it more clearly, I think they'll adopt it more readily.
I'm particularly pleased of the comment, the question from Father Mark because it never even occurred to me that this scrutiny and oversight would not cover all of the schools and that would include those charter, that would include charter schools also.
It will.
Well, I assumed it would, but it's a good question to be asked and fully answered. If there are no other questions, thank you very much. An excellent presentation, we look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
And with that, we will have Ron Denard, our Vice President, Senior Vice President of Finance, giving us the financial update.
Okay, it looks like we're, could be having technical difficulties.
Zip plug, Dan.
Zip plug.
Try the on.
All right. Good morning, Ron Denard, Senior Vice President of Finance. So I will talk about, briefly about, give you a financial update on some of the cost savings and initiatives that we currently have going on. So first of all, I'll talk about 2016. We started the year off with $160 million of expense reductions, being more efficient, reducing vacancies. We made an additional $225 million of expenditure reductions during the year. 173 million of those were structural and actually carried over into 2017 and thus allowed us to reduce our '17 budget. As far as 2017, we have $300 million of projects that we have identified to reduce our deficit and I'll briefly go through some of those. The first one is sweeping vacancy savings and that's roughly about 2% of total labor. We've reprogrammed grants.
Ron, the sweeping vacancy savings, that's really a timing opportunity when you bring people on.
So, yeah, so what happens is we budget, we budget positions for the full year and then based on when they actually come, if for instance, for instance, in July, if we've budgeted for 12 months and then we don't hire the person in July, that creates a savings, so we take that savings and reduce our deficit.
Thank you.
There's still the rest of the budget is there for the position, but they don't need it because the person's only going to be here for 11 of the 12 months. The next one was reprogramming grants to the classroom, that's 35 million, that's done. So we were able to more efficiently use Title I and Title II dollars and push them out to the classroom. The centralized purchasing savings, which we will gain more savings by more increased volume purchasing.
Can I stop you on that one too? We don't want to take the necessary controls that principals need within their own schools to buy certain things in a timely fashion. On the other hand, I know that centralized purchasing, when you sort of limit the number of vendors you're using, but you also get a much better price, can provide a substantial savings. You're saying 35 million here. How are we communicating these opportunities to the principals so they know that these vendors are preferred vendors and will really help us, help them and help us in our cost saving efforts?
So as we finalize, they're called strategic sourcing contracts and we put them in place, we'll be able to prove to the principals that this is what you, this is what you paid last year and this is what you'll pay using this contract and will, in addition, we possibly will get volume of rebates from it. And then we will, so we will communicate that out to the principals. We will prove to them that the strategic sourcing contracts will actually save them money and will pull that saving.
Well, 35 million is significant. Dr. Jackson, how do we overcome the communication efforts? As you've heard me say in our conversations, I remember when I was a supervisor, a manager, director, in whatever area I had a responsibility for, I didn't always welcome people coming and telling me how to spend. So how do you, and yet it was necessary, I'm just being honest. How do you overcome that?
I think, I think we've already started to overcome that this year. I know Ron and members of Alfonso's team have met with principals, in particular around like the IT savings and some of the other savings. Also, when we presented the budget to principals earlier this summer, Forrest talked to principals about some of those savings initiatives as well. So I think that it's in the bloodstream, but I think whenever you make a change, some principals will ask questions because they like that autonomy. But I think if we do a good job communicating how these savings both benefit the district but also them at their local schools, it's hard to deny that opportunity given our financial situation.
Thank you.
Okay, and in addition, we have anticipated additional labor savings of roughly 31 million. We also talked about phasing in shared services, that's the expansion of the SSC that Andrel talked about and centralizing some of those, those financial functions, that that's where you get the standardization because we'll actually centralize the functions. We'll also, as we create efficiencies there and reduce our budget, there's a corresponding reduction to charter schools. We also have closed out positions that we eliminated last year, so that, that is done, so that savings is captured already also. We'll create savings from teacher retirements and resignations. We have new TIF revenue, which we aggressively pursued from the city and we've gotten that, so that one's done also. We have scheduling efficiencies.
I'm sorry again to interrupt you. Because of continuous comments made about the TIF balance and what's really available, can you just elaborate? We have a number of 15 million dollars and we've had comments earlier and I'm sure perhaps even today at this hearing, I'm sure at the board hearing later, that we will have people who feel that their comments are fact-based, that there's a much, much, much larger TIF balance that we should be reflecting.
So I will clarify, for 2016, there was only 113 million dollars of TIF surplus. I repeat, there was only 113 million dollars of total TIF surplus, of which CPS received 60 million. So now they're analyzing the 2017 TIF surplus and we've gotten commitments already of for 13- for 32 million of that TIF surplus. And in 2016, there was, there was an aberration, they froze the downtown TIFs and not allowed to get more money. We, we were allowed to get even more money and there was a larger TIF surplus. So the numbers that you hear are not always the correct number. I could say for sure that it was 113 million for 2016 and they're analyzing 2017 and we, of which we have 32 million in our operating budget and we actually have 54 million in our capital budget of, of TIF revenue.
Thank you.
We, so we're also looking at scheduling efficiencies, we're looking at improved Medicaid collections, some additional central office streamlining, the efficiencies that, that some of the efficiencies that Andrel's talking about. We think there's some additional revenue that we can get from sponsorship and then there was some, some summer school programming savings because we had better academic achievement, we didn't have to have as much summer school this year as last year, so that one's already done. So we actually have already achieved about roughly 70 million dollars of the 300 million dollars of, of savings that we, we've identified.
Okay, questions for Ron? Actually, I have a question, Ron, but it's probably a question that CEO Claypool should, should address. The 300 million dollar piece of our overall budget, I, I've read a couple of news articles where that piece is being challenged as well as the 215 million dollar piece that's still contingent upon it and a agreement with the legislative leaders in Springfield and the governor. The board, certainly I feel and I believe the board feels, that the budget, the 2017 budget is indeed a balanced budget, it's not without risks, but relative to the 2016 budget, those risks have been substantially eliminated with the hard work of your organization and many others and the leadership of CEO Claypool. Would you, would you just generally comment on, on the strength of our 2017 budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think everything is within our control except for the 215 million dollar state obligation and unlike last year, when it was a hope and a prayer, this year we do have the absolute public commitments of the governor and the four legislative leaders and we have the legislation which passed and the commitment in a bipartisan way from Springfield, which is radically different than a year ago. And it would be absolutely irresponsible for us to ignore that commitment from our elected leaders and cut 215 million dollars out of our classrooms. We're going to rely on that commitment, we're going to continue to work with our leaders in Springfield and, and, you know, it's critically important that those, that the state for the first time recognizes that they have an obligation to contribute at least something to the pension obligations of Chicago teachers, not just suburban and downstate teachers.
Thank you very much. I, I wanted to emphasize that because the progress made with the 2016 versus the 2017 fiscal year budget for CPS, in my judgment, has been extraordinary. We have not solved all the problems, we have not closed every gap, but you're looking at a budget that's so much stronger than it was just a year ago and frankly, it is due to the excellent leadership of CEO Claypool and the leadership team and a strong financial group and a lot of sacrifice. You know, an interesting analogy comes to my mind as I listen to people who come up and with good intentions instruct us on all the things that we haven't done well and tell us what we should be doing. They're, they're generally well-meaning, if not always well-informed. And the, the bottom line here is, is an adage that goes back to years of work in the corporate world. It's, it goes like this, everybody's a change agent and to change comes to them, then not so much. In this particular case, everybody wants reduce, wants to see a balanced budget, everyone wants new revenue sources, everyone wants appropriate reductions, they often point at, at, at areas that the reductions are minimal. Everyone wants to see improvement, but when the improvement affects their particular areas, not so much. But, you know, our job here as the board is to balance all of these considerations and put forth the strongest budget that we can support and, and that's really what you see as attempting to do. And, and we do get a lot of input, actually things that people say sometimes, even when they don't say it very nicely, there's, there's, there are grams of, grains of, of actually constructive components that we, we go back and look at. This is an ongoing process that when it affects individual parts of the organization, there's real pain, but you can get to where we have to go without some real pain. We do our best, obviously, to do what we should do first and foremost and that's to protect the education component. We're here to educate kids, but, young people, but we have to have the financial resources to, to do that, which is why these two hearings we've just gone through are so important. We, we need internal controls that work, we need compliance that's adhered to and we need a strong financial team that understands where we have to go, understands what our gaps are and gives the board real options. Thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we will proceed with the public comments section.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. this morning and, Mr. President, we do not have any registered speakers.
Well, that's probably why I talk so long. If there are no, if there are no public comments and the board has no other questions or comments, this meeting is adjourned? Oh, do I need a motion for that? Then I have a motion to adjourn. Who, who's going to second it for me?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? We are adjourned.